We're in this meeting to order. It is the January monthly meeting of the Brentwood School Board. I am the Chair, Melissa Litchfield. If I could, I'd like to please go around the room.
Good evening, Ron Q., Principal Swayze.
Good evening, Chris Andruski Assistant Superintendent.
Megan Fitzgerald, School Board Member.
Allison Higgins, Vice Chair.
Brian Duffy, School Board Member.
Lydia Bedard, School Board Member.
Molly O'Keefe, Director of Finance.
Thank you. And Ron, if you would lead us in. Thank you. Non-public, may be called at any time if necessary under 91A. At this point, I'd like to move on to the approval of the minutes. Does anybody have anything?
I have, I have a couple things. Who's taking the edit?
I'll make changes.
Okay. Dr. Ryan was present, so I would just add him to the first part where it says Administration Present. I think that's it.
I'm sorry, Letty, did you have more or that was?
I had a question about the minutes, or I had a question about last meeting, but not anything else about the minutes.
Okay. Do you want to ask now?
Oh, yeah, no, I just wanted to make sure that Ms. Newbert's right to know request had been fulfilled. Ms. Newber- Ms. Newbert's right to know request?
Yep.
Has been fulfilled?
I will check with Dr. Ryan and believe he was taking care of that one.
Okay.
So I had a couple of things. On page two, under 6.2 and 6.21, it mentions the Budget Committee at least twice. And both times it says Budget Advisory, it's just a municipal budget committee. So I don't know if you want to just take out the word municipal, if we could update that, please. And then also, I noticed on the bottom of page three, under eight, Report from the Chair, just above the word Correspondence, under Elected Officials, it's just elected is spelt kind of funky. And then finally, on page four, under 9.2, Superintendent's Evaluation Committee. In between that and Public Comment, it just has my name just randomly kind of floating. So if we could remove that, please. Did anyone have anything else? No. Okay, seeing as we don't have any other changes, may I please have a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Okay. I'm not hearing either of you through your mics.
I'll second it.
So Allison has made the motion and Letty has made the second. All in favor? Aye, any opposed? Okay, so that passes 5-0. What I would like to do, if it's all right with the Board, I know we have several people here that are probably looking to speak tonight. I know Doug Cowie had asked to come. I'm assuming it'll just be a couple of minutes to go over what's happening at our meeting. Do you want to, if the Board is okay with that and the public, if you can just come up? And then that way you can go ahead on your way, you don't have to stay for a couple hours. It's up to you. All right. I figured you wanted to start. So do you want to introduce yourself?
Okay, for those who I haven't met in the audience, Doug Cowie and moderator, this is-
I can't hear you through the microphone.
Okay, and this is that time of the year where we have to start thinking about the district meeting. And it's been very quiet, so I thought it was good to stop by and see where we're at. Couple places, couple of things we have to know. We have to know where, are we going to have it the Friday, Friday before town meeting as we usually do?
So Friday, March, I believe it's Friday, March the 4th, but I'm going to look right now.
I believe that's right.
What? Yes, right?
Yeah.
Yes, Friday, March the 4th at 6:00 PM. Are you busy that night?
Isn't that vacation week? Yeah, that's, oop. That's the week, the town meeting's on the 12th. So it must be the 11th.
Are you all around?
I'm not. Hold on. Town meeting is on the 12th.
Are you around?
I am, yeah.
So you're saying that you have, I would not want to have the meeting on vacation week because a lot of families who have, would probably come, might be away. So I would-
So we need to have it prior to the 8th? So we're looking at four, five, six?
Wait, why do we need to have it prior to the 8th?
I won't be here.
But I thought you usually- I thought you usually finish out your-
This is my suggestion to everyone, just financially speaking, it's always been to our benefit for us to go first prior to the town meeting on the 12th. And we are looking at hopefully, a warrant article for the teachers. So I would definitely like to see that voted on, especially since Tuesday, we're going to have I believe four warrant, or three or four warrant articles for the co-op, for their teachers. I just truly feel it's in our best interest to have it that week, that weekend before. I mean, I don't know. And we've also put it in the newsletter as well. So what are the thoughts from all of you? You're the moderator, Ron, first, do you have thoughts as well? Clearly, the Board is concerned, so.
Yeah, it's because of the week had been shifted. Usually we're vacation the last week of February, not in March. The RSA, under, well, the traditional annual meeting for Department of Revenue, there's certain parameters you have to follow. And so the reason it falls on the 4th is because the last day to post warrants in budget form for your annual meeting is February 25th. Which then, it has to be 14 days before the meeting. Of the meeting, including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays. So that's why the 4th was selected, because of when your posting was going to be done, so the last possible day in which that was posted. So that's how we selected the 4th as the recommendation, based on the information from the field. It's the same situation in Stratum, which is also an annual meeting, they're having to have the same discussion.
So we want to put our budget up when parents can't attend?
Does it have to be on a Friday? And does it have to be like, one week, can it be the week prior to the, so? I mean, that's getting close, I guess.
Well, historically in the past, the school likes to get that stuff done before the town. And that way, people can go and, you know, we really need free snow piles in town, can't we get by with one and a half? Or, you know, whatever. So it's worked all over the years. I wouldn't recommend changing it. And usually, we usually meet at 6:00. Anything later than that, the seniors can't make it, or, you know, it's past their bedtime, I'm approaching that myself. So, and they like to come in and just see where things are going and what's going on. So it's going pretty well.
Chris, if the budget doesn't pass, does it default to this year's?
See, again, sorry, there's noise.
No, we have to have a meeting. We don't have a default. So is either Saturday, well, Chris, use all of you, would Saturday or Monday be a consideration? What are you thinking, Brian?
Which Saturday? Which Saturday, which Monday?
So Saturday, the 5th, or Monday, the 7th?
It strikes me that Saturday, the 5th, you'd have the same issue as Friday, the 4th. It's still a week during which a good number of people will be traveling or away. Monday, the 7th?
There's a school board meeting anyways, could we just do it before that?
No, in Lua.
In Lua, even better. I just think we're crazy to do it during vacation week when parents aren't here to vote. I'm not here either way, but.
Are you here Monday, the 7th? Okay. Thoughts?
No, I can definitely check and make sure that there's no legal ramifications moving it to the 7th. As long as we're following everything from the DRA, if it is, I have no issue with it moving it to the 7th in lieu of the school board meeting.
Part of why, I'm feeling confident that probably it is okay is because last year, I think we were trying to rent out the high school. That was a consider, that was one of the days, you know, the Monday before, the night before, I think, right? Was it a consideration? So, all right.
So let me check on that and I will let the Board know, but if that's the date we want to move to, I will check on that, I'll get your answer by the end of the week.
Okay, and that's a definite, right? Because it's already been put out there, so I just want to make sure.
I would support moving to the 7th.
I am also not here on the 4th, so I would prefer the 7th.
Okay. You're the moderator, is that okay with you?
Well, yeah. The hired hand who stands up there and tries to keep things moving, how do you look at it? Anyway, that works for me. And the time you want to start at is what, 6:00 PM? On Monday?
Yes, 6:00 PM.
Okay. The only reason why it's important for me to know that is I need to get together with Daphne. And we have to arrange for people to be here. You know, the counters, the supervisors of the checklist, hopefully will be on time, especially if it's in town.
I would also, I would also ask her to please prepare for a ballot vote.
We always prefer to be prepared for a ballot vote.
Okay.
Because that's something that anybody can petition for, or we can order a ballot vote if there's a question.
Right.
So, yeah, we're always prepared for that.
Okay, perfect.
Any other issues on that part of it?
Does anyone have any questions for Doug?
I had a question about if we're holding it here, do, because it's, because it's in the school, does everyone have to wear a mask? Okay. You're nodding and she's, you're saying?
Because it's an election, we can't keep anyone legally out of here.
That is correct.
Okay.
We encourage the wearing of masks.
Is that going to be a problem for you, Mr. Q., in terms of cleaning for school on Tuesday? Or is there no school on Tuesday?
We need after vacation.
There's school Tuesday.
If we moved to the 7th, you mean on the 8th?
Sometimes on Election Day, there's no school, that's why I was asking. Yes, we were talking about moving the meeting to the 7th, the night of the 7th. There's no school the 8th. Oh, so there's no school, all right.
Shouldn't be an issue.
You're really stopping us tonight, Doug. Okay, so I think that, I think that's good, though. Do you have any questions or anything else that you wanted to tell us?
Well, okay, the second thing is, it's quite, we can have it here?
Yes.
Well, I say, that's important to know, so that I can assemble the proof and be ready to do this inside town.
Yes.
And then, and then the next thing after that is, it's important, it's important to get word back, and I'll do this a little later tonight, is I'll stop by the selectmen's meeting and tell them that this is what you guys are signing up for. It's on the Monday instead of Friday, 6:00 PM, and then, and it's going to be here. Because they're looking to hold the town meeting, the continued town meeting after the ballot vote on Wednesday, then we continue town meeting at the actual meeting. And assuming that my counterpart stays healthy this year, and does that part of it, it was a hectic, it was a hectic year last year, trust me, it really was. Okay, then if that's the case, and everybody here is good with that, then we'll be back to sort of normal.
Are you literally about to head over to the selectman meeting? Right now?
Not quite right now, but I won't interrupt the meeting any longer. The only other thing is, is the usual ground rules, we have to have some organization here. So you'll have to put together a frivolous formula of when I read the article, who's going to move it? Who's going to second it?
Okay.
Who's going to speak to it, so that we appear professional and organized?
Okay. Perfect. Before you go, I want to ask you a question for the Board, please, since you're heading over there anyway. We had received a question from the Town Hall, which I had sent to the Board, and that was about them utilizing this gymnasium for the town meeting as well, which they typically do. I spoke to Karen again today to confirm, and she definitely does want to go ahead and use this space. I told her I would get back to her, it would be late tonight or tomorrow morning after talking to the Board. I hadn't heard back from, I had heard from a couple of people on the Board, but not everybody, or kind of indecisive. So I just want to confirm that we have, okay.
If it's all right with the principal, then.
Sorry, I'll work with Rusty to make sure there's somebody here on that day. I'll make sure we order chairs to have them here for that.
Okay, perfect. And so for the Board, it will be that following Saturday? So we're all, perfect, okay.
Sure, all good with that.
So do you mind just delivering the message?
It's on my way home anyway.
Thank you. Only if you stop it anyway, if you're not, don't worry about it. All right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or any questions to make?
Does anyone have any questions for Doug? No, thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
We'll see you soon. So thank you to everyone who's here for that, I appreciate that. I just wanted to bring everyone's attention to our Board, School Board goals, adopted September of 2021. At the top of our agenda, number six, working collaboratively with the BTA to renew the teacher's contract. And the reason why I say that is that one of our objectives, we just want to make sure that this is out there. One of our objectives is to meet with, to meet with you all and to bring these negotiations to a resolution. I know a number of you may be here because you want to discuss the teacher's contract. We just need to be clear that the negotiations are between the Board Negotiations Team and the BTA Negotiation Team. We are confident an agreement will go back to all for ratification. Individual members of the BTA and individual Board members should not be discussing outside of negotiation. That is, Board to Teacher, Teacher to Board. There are policies. It is not appropriate for us to respond to any emails from an individual regarding negotiations. The Board is desiring to reach an agreement. We're looking to reach an agreement in line with the rest of the SAU regarding wage increases, and want to be sure to offer a comprehensive and affordable health plan. We have a fiduciary duty to balance the needs of both the taxpayers and our staff. What I can share is that the Board considers these negotiations to still be ongoing. The Board has requested mediation, and we have been waiting on a response from the teachers' union. There's been a lot of miscommunication put out there. And I just wanted to say that parties have reached a tentative agreement already regarding about a dozen items on the contract. With that, I'd like to go ahead and I would like to open this up for public comment. When you stand up to the mic, please state your, please state your name and address. And we are limiting public comment, just typically as per policy, to three minutes per person. Thank you.
All right, I'll start us off. Just to be clear, we are at impasse, so we can discuss negotiations.
I know who you are, obviously, but can you please just announce who you are?
Amy Gentile, Atkinson, New Hampshire. I don't know who's recording that, who I should aim that to. Funny the difference a year can make. Last year at this time, many of us were still remote, and some were in school five days with pairs teaching cohorts. Last year, this Board referred to us as rock stars. This year, those rock stars are being asked to degrade their health insurance benefits. We still have a pandemic going on. We're still here, going above and beyond, and that, yet the funds for an upcoming pavement project were easily found, while reasoning and funding to sustain our current benefits was a major point of contention at the negotiation table. Many folks today will speak to their personal importance of maintaining our health insurance, but few are probably as familiar with the benefit as I am, fortunately for them. As many of you, as many of you already know, two years ago, I was diagnosed with a rare aggressive form of advanced-stage breast cancer. The disability coverage in our district currently afforded me less than 50% of my monthly salary. Thankfully, having spent many years here already, I was able to turn in all of my sick time. When that ran out, since we have no sick bank established in our contract, the BTA stepped in on their own to petition the Board to donate their time, so I could be paid. Even with the substantial portion of my salary, being sick is expensive, especially as a single parent. I was unbelievably grateful that my health insurance coverage allowed me to receive world-class treatment at Dana Farber, with a specialist that specialized in my cancer. I continue to face challenges with my health, but have an established relationship with knowledgeable healthcare providers I'd like to maintain. To think about compounding an already extreme situation with financial burden or massive copays, and/or to limit coverage or providers would make an already unbearable experience so much harder. I am one example of many. But let's, as your negotiating team suggested, take the emotion out of it. As a member of the negotiating team, we've demonstrated time and time again about how our contract compares to the rest of the SAU and Seacoast. We have the lowest per student cost, less than the state average. We have the lowest first step salary in SAU 16, and are among the lowest at the top. We have the lowest first-step salary in SAU 16 and are among the lowest at the top. We also pay significantly more of our current family health plans than anyone around. Our only intent going into negotiations was to keep our contract competitive. Degrading our health insurance coverage would further a gap between Brentwood's contract and the rest of the SAU and Seacoast. Further, our budget is coming in significantly under this year, at the negative, and our salary line, as you have mentioned many times, has also seen a substantial savings with retirements. But yet, we are being asked to reduce our health insurance costs to save money, because everyone is doing it. When you look at the numbers again, just looking at the facts, the board-proposed move would save approximately $25,000 a year.
I'm sorry, Amy, I'm going to have to ask you to please wrap it up.
Okay, no problem. I propose you carefully consider not just the facts, but also people behind this contract. Swayze is known for its level of care. You can feel it when you walk into the building, you can see it on the faces of the staff and hear it in the voices of our students. We take care of one another. It's what we do. Now it's time for this board to take care of its teachers.
My name is Willamita Bradley, and I live at 61 Rockerman Road, Kingston, New Hampshire. I've worked at Swayze Central School for 24 or 25 years, I can't remember. I ride my bike. I ride my bike around the community, and I see children and adults alike who know me. I've walked through Exeter High School, and students share their story about me. There's even a Brentwood police officer that I had in third grade. We are a community that I love. I am 60. I commute to my school on bicycle. I'm a vegan. I try to keep healthy as I can. I'm now the oldest teacher at Swayze Central School. I am thankful for the health care that I've had, and I hope to continue to have. Years ago, the teachers decided whether they were an explorer or a settler. Much to my chagrin, I am a settler. I have been a happy teacher for 39 years. I am headstrong, but I am committed to the advance in education to help the children in our community learn to be great citizens. I am thankful for our health care, and I hope that our future teachers will be as lucky as me, a settler in an awesome community. Thank you so very much.
I am a teacher here. I am on the negotiating committee. I am co-president of the Brentwood Teachers Association, but I've also lived in Brentwood for 21 years, and the school was the reason that we moved here. I didn't move here to work here, I was a volunteer for the first few years, but we moved here so our girls could get an education at Swayze. The heart of the school is the teachers, and coming at teachers to take away their benefits at this point in time, when we feel like we've gone above and beyond over and over again, when we know that we are the school in this district by huge amounts, that per pupil cost is the lowest, at $16,774, that's 27% less than some of our other elementary schools in this district. We work 186 days along with Exeter Elementary. The other elementary schools work less than that, 184, 185. We're looking to have a contract that is comparable to our district and to not be at a disadvantage when we go forward. Thank you.
My name is Crystal Buswell. I am the art teacher here at Swayze. I currently live in Dover. My children were students at Swayze. I have two girls. I lived in town for 12 years. I can remember after I gave birth to my youngest, pulling up after leaving the hospital and driving here to vote for our school expansion, while my husband was in the car with my newborn. I have been committed to this school. I have taught here for the last 17 years. I am a member of the negotiating committee. Eight days ago, I took two hours of my time to really put my thoughts in an email that I sent to all of the board, expecting at the very least some sort of acknowledgement, even acknowledgement of receipt of that email. And I know you spoke tonight about that it's not your policy. I'm saying to the board, maybe you should consider a change in that policy, because leaving my email that I took the time to write to put a face on this current situation and our current place in our negotiations really feels very poor. And is that who we are as a community? Is that what the message that you want to convey to me when I take the time to say to you that my youngest child has not one, not two, but three autoimmune diseases that she deals with? That my insurance that I provide solely on my own, without any support from my ex, that I pay for at 22%? I could take my insurance in Newfields and pay 20%, but I continue to take it here, because this is where I feel my home is and where I have taken my benefits. I really don't understand, and it really does typify how I have felt through this whole negotiating process, that you say that we're rock stars, you say that, you know, with all due respect, but yet your actions are not really showing respect for what we do. And I think at the very least, I, just a simple acknowledgement, I hear where you're coming from, and I've received that information. I just really think it's very poor that I took time out of my life to really put my thoughts in order, so that you can see where I'm coming from, and maybe you could, as a board, see that the effects of the decisions that you think that you're wanting to make in regards to our health insurance, and you could see how it's going to impact my small little family. Huge ramifications. My daughter cannot function without her medication. And I don't feel confident in what's being offered. And I implore you to really think about the direction that you're taking in regards to the people who have worked so hard.
Thank you.
I teach second grade here at Swayze. Last year, it was particularly difficult for the staff at Swayze. I can only give specifics and speak for myself to tell you what I did. I was asked to be the remote teacher for second grade after I set up my classroom for the whole year.
So I want to thank the board for hearing from the educators tonight, because we're not in town, but this directly affects us. I'm going to do a few shout-outs, because I just think it's really, really important to publicly acknowledge some, some things that have been happening here at the school. A huge thanks to my colleagues who have been working extra hard, covering for each other, supporting each other and the children, working through sickness, and in general, showing what a community does when it is threatened. A shout-out to Rebecca, we'd be lost without her. Big shout-out to Katie Gallo for leading us through that first week back after vacation. It was a really low point, I think, for a lot of us, and she really led with grace and compassion. A shout-out to Ron for steering the ship with winds and storms coming from a million different directions. Shout-out to my colleagues who've been sick with COVID and other illnesses during this time. I'm so sorry that you're dealing with this and being pushed to come back to work before you may be ready due to the new national guidelines, lack of sick time, because you used a lot of it last year and this year, lack of subs, and generally, an overwhelming responsibility, which I think all the staff here have, for each other and for the children. Beyond the community feeling I felt here when I was an intern with Sheila back in 2016, the good benefits and salary are other reasons why I came to Brentwood, why I applied to Brentwood to be here. I love Swayze, and I'm grateful for working with my colleagues who genuinely, genuinely support each other and the children. The past two years have been a prime example of how this staff has been flexible, resilient, supportive, and hard-working during extreme times, times that have threatened our health and safety. I believe that after the way this staff has shown up for Brentwood, the town will want to show up for us. I believe that competitive salaries and top-notch health insurance will attract the highest-quality teachers, as it has done so far, to Brentwood, which in the long run will benefit the taxpayers of Brentwood. Property values will rise with a highly-rated school and could fall with one that can only attract teachers looking for a starting place or teachers with minimum qualifications. And now I'm going to get personal, because this is personal. I am a person whom this impasse and potential loss of staff, a raise, and most of all, health benefits, directly affects. We're all people here, we're not data points. Without going to details, and I appreciate other people who have gone into details, I will state that based on my health history, I feel my health is being directly threatened by the impasse and the proposal put forth by the board negotiators. Feeling unsafe was why I left my last teaching job and came to Brentwood, and here I am now, feeling unsafe, disrespected, and undervalued again. I value what is offered to me here, and I hope the school board and townspeople will continue to show that they respect and support their educators and care for the well-being of their children by approving a favorable teacher contract. Thank you.
Do we have any other public comment this evening?
Suzy Curtis from 15 Gallant, Brentwood, New Hampshire. I just want to make it clear that there are a lot of parents here tonight and at home that are here in support of their teachers, wishing to have equal pay and benefits. We are interested in our schools maintaining their excellent rankings. I know that's something that a lot of residents are interested in, and the way we do that is with attractive benefits and salaries. So to me, this is a must. So please negotiate wisely.
Hi, my name's Katie Capola. I live at 21 Dalton. As a town employee, I know what it feels like to be a number. Unfortunately, I am currently a number in the system. So I want to know that, let the teachers know, I know how you're feeling. I'm here to 100% support you. I'm here for the parents who can't be here because their kids have COVID or are sick themselves. I just want you to know that there's way more support than is actually here right now. My son is a kindergartner. I hope to keep him here forever. I have an 18-month-old, I hope to keep her here forever. But the way we're going to keep them here forever is if we negotiate correctly and keep the teachers that we have, because that's why I fell in love with the school, because of the teachers and the administration. Thank you.
Kim Leo from 23 Labrew Street in Brentwood. I would like to remind the board that our town employees also get great benefits. If we're supporting our schools, shouldn't we also support our teachers in the same benefits, or at least competitive benefits? Because I know what the select board and the budget committee have approved, and many of our town members do as well. We moved, most of the people who've moved to Brentwood, moved here for the community and the town and the school. Please don't make us lose the teachers that we have and the magic that the school is. Please take your time, look at what we are providing our teachers, and make sure that we are taking care of them. Our staff has done an amazing job over the last two years. Please don't let our kids backslide, because you're stuck on a number, or you're stuck in one spot.
I, I'm sorry, but I'm going to have to address this. You should be looking and listening to those who are speaking instead of off in the space.
I'm listening to every word. Are you all set?
Thank you for all the teachers and the staff. The people of Brentwood support you, and we couldn't be here without you. We wouldn't be here without you. This school is magical, and thank you.
Do we have any other public comment this evening? No? Okay, seeing as none, we will be moving on. I'd like to say thank you to everyone who made public comment. I do want to make it very clear that we do value our teachers and our staff very much. And I also want to make it very clear that the Brentwood Board did not call an impasse or walk away from the negotiation table. Molly, you're up next.
Okay, so I brought the manifest, they should be floating around somewhere over there. If you want to sign them and pass them back this way, that would be great. So in your board pack was the financial at this point in time, it was done quite some time ago, since we did postpone the meeting, but the majority of the additional expense is related to the siding and roofing and the roof repair. Did anybody have any additional comments on the expense side? And then on the revenue side, I believe this is the first time we're reporting the Health Trust money. So all the districts across the SAU are receiving a Health Trust surplus. This, this has happened this year and last year, but unfortunately, it's happened because of COVID and people not going to the doctors, so Health Trust has to return the surplus that they have. So Brentwood is receiving the $42,122. So if we want to expend that money, we would have to have the public hearing to be able to accept. to accept and expend and have the board accept and expend. Or that will just fall to the fund balance if we so choose to do so, if we don't want to have the public hearing.
Is there a recommendation on that from either of you?
Your fund balance is very high right now. Would not be a recommendation to hold a public hearing to expend that money. Recommend turning it back to the taxpayers at the end of the year.
Is this a situation where we just do nothing like we did with the?
No, we don't do nothing because then we have to accept it and not expend it.
We made the same motion. I make a motion to accept the $42,000, what is it, $122 from the health trust and to not expend it, to return it to the taxpayers.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. Do we have any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Hi, any opposed? Okay, unanimous. Thank you.
Great, and that's all I had. And if you just want to pass the manifest back when you're done, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask like a non-financial question to that? So that's like $42,000 that's separate from the unreserved fund balance. And so when we're going to like approve or get these warrant articles approved, can we say that, like we've accepted, you know, like we're going to ask for warrant, we're going to ask for town money? Can we say while we're doing that, like we have these funds that are going back that are going to basically cover whatever warrant articles we want passed?
You can make the town aware when you're doing that.
Because we're like, we're going to be asking for money, but we're, it's already kind of that money is accounted for.
Absolutely. I agree, yeah.
Yeah, and as we get closer to the end of the year, it's always going to be in that fund balance on the right-hand side of the paper as well.
Okay, thanks Molly. I don't think we have anything else financial if you want to go.
Okay, I'll pack up in a few.
From the SAU, not much to report because we do have a joint board meeting on the 24th. We do have, as you have on your packet today, a pretty lengthy report in there, so it's covered in the joint board report for this month.
Did you want to address the next one or no?
Yeah, we wanted to get input from the board about the presentation on data and exactly what you're looking for for data for our next meeting in February. We had a goal to make sure that we were reporting out on data and we've done that once on STEAM and some initial test scores, but there was discussion about statewide test scores and cohort groups, so I wanted to bring that back if that's the will of the board to have that as part of the presentation or the major data point for our February meeting.
You're looking at me, so I'll answer this question. So.
We did put it on the agenda with you in mind.
So to me, right, like we get all the emails, we get, we see it in the news, like, like not Swayze in general, but in, but, but just about test scores and about school ratings falling and not Swayze, not putting Swayze there. But as a school board member, like I just want to be able to see, I'm not saying that state testing data is the end-all, be-all and if there's better data to add to it. But like I have been saying this for a lot of years and we have yet to get it on a regular basis, but like I want trend data. You know, like years ago, I think like this current seventh grade class was like the, they were like the two-person, is that where Holly is, right? Eighth grade class. They were like the two-person, they were in fourth grade with only two classes. And that's the year that we added the teaching position going into the following year. And like the conversation we had that summer, or that it was that summer because we had an emergency meeting that summer, was their test scores look different than other classes' test scores. Is it a cohort issue? Is it the fact that they're in bigger classrooms? Like there wasn't like, and I remember having that conversation then saying, it would be awesome to be able to track the school-wide data, right? Like how are we doing as a school? But like how do different cohorts, like how do cohorts compare? Like were they an anomaly and were there factors that were influencing that? But like we just don't ever have the data to like, I feel like have that, you know? I don't know. I mean, if I, if I could say I would want to see state test scores and then you tell me what other data, okay? But state test scores every single year for the third grade, the fourth grade and the fifth grade. And I would love to see, like how does this year's third grade compare to last year's third grade too, right? Like I'd be curious, like how is the pandemic affecting our third graders or our fourth graders, our fifth graders compared to the years before the pandemic? And not for judgment purposes, but like, hey, maybe we need to give you more resources purposes. And like, so that, that's what I want.
Other input from the board?
I hear that. I just, my, I guess, thought on it is that I don't necessarily want data just for data sake. Like I feel like if it's, if there's other measurement tools that are more useful or more practical, maybe they're less qualitative or less quantitative. But I just feel like if it's a data report just so that we could have it, like I would want to make sure we're going to, like what are we going to use it for? Because it's a lot of work to put together. And I, I just feel like the last couple of years, like using testing data is really, like I would question whether it's really showing, it's like the impact of the pandemic on a child, like the inequity between each child.
Right, but like if the, if there needs to be additional reading support or if we need to add resources, like it, it provides it, right? Like to me, we can't just constantly add program funding if we don't have, if we don't understand why. Like I agree, I'm not asking for data for data at all. And I agree totally that there could be object, subjective data associated with it, right? But I think that it's been a gap. I mean, it's, the conversation's been happening at the joint board for years about having some sort of dashboard so that we can understand what the schools, like how the schools are performing. And I think it's a, it's something that's missing across the entire district, not just for Swayze.
I think it would be helpful to, as you mentioned, putting resources out there, but just targeting those resources, you know? Is it more tutors? Is it specifically math? Is it specifically this grade? And I'm thinking that the numbers that we're asking to have put together, hopefully they're, whether they're out there on the DOE or hopefully they're numbers that you're probably looking at anyway. I definitely think that there is a very real slide with COVID, but I think we need to face it head-on and we have to do what we can to bring these kiddos up to speed because we're going into third, the third year. So they're elementary career. So I've also seen some that are out there that have shown how the schools within the district have, Swayze is one where, and I don't remember the exact numbers, maybe we went from number 16 to 26 or I don't know what they based that on. And I will say to Swayze's credit that I think our backslide was the least of any of the schools. So there's a positive there and again, it could have been due to COVID or something, but, but I think it's fair that that's our job, right? To dig in and take a look at things. I would agree with that.
And it is, it's like the pandemic, like this request has been coming from way before the pandemic, right? I mean, that year, it was a total battle about whether there should be another teacher or not. And there was really mixed opinions, you know, whether there were, you know, there was requests from parents for other teachers, there were some, you know, mixed opinions in the school whether we should add another teacher. And I just think that when there was, if there was data to watch, it would, it would have helped, like we had to kind of just wing it and say, you know what, like our gut says add a teacher. But it would have been better to be able to have had the support for, like the, the data behind it.
No, I hear you. The one, other, so like another like long-term, and I get we're just asking to see data and look at it, but connecting it to funding makes me a little nervous because like, and I get, that's my whole job, I do grant writing, like I connect data to funding, like that's what I do. But I feel like part of the magic people talked about at Swayze is like I'd have never felt like my kids are being taught to a test. And so if we're going to base funding decisions on testing data, like my long-term concern, like it's not obviously a short-term concern, is that state testing becomes more the most important thing and the kids lose the like.
I think you're misinterpreting my request because like I'm not remotely saying we're tying our budget to funding. I'm saying if there's needed additional resources for us to understand. And I also think that like we've never tied any, like we've never tied any sort of like performance. I mean, I don't even remember who came in originally with the STEAM request. Like we've never, but I think that, that we do have some responsibility to have some oversight of the funding that we spend.
But that being said too, I do think, if there's a better tool out there, great, but we do have to measure the students' progress in some fashion. I agree that there can be too much testing maybe in some aspects and it's not necessarily fair to the kids or the staff, but I definitely think that it does have its place and its role. And for me, anyway, the data wasn't, same as Allison said, it wasn't to place any type of judgment, it was more to add support, quite honestly.
Okay.
If I could chime in, yeah, the, the state testing, which kind of does that ranking aspect is what we've been talking about is a moment in time, okay? So I would tell you that daily our students are being assessed in one form or another, typically informal, okay? It's formative, it informs what we do. So I think there's a relationship between the trust the community has and the people that work in data. I know we want to hear and we want to see good things, but when, when the, when the rankings fall, people are concerned about those types of things. I think our main focus is the day-to-day. So what do we do as far as when we're not seeing the improvement? What is the, what is the multi-tiered system we have in place to provide support? First most is the talented teaching staff that we have and then reports in programming to, to be able to provide what students need. Through the year, we do more formal testing or screenings and we're doing those now in the winter time. So some of the things I'd like to be able to share in February and into March is that growth that our students are having, okay? And every student has their own individual needs, okay? So we're not, we're not reporting on individual classrooms or on individual students, but definitely of what type of growth are we seeing with our kiddos? And we can talk a lot more about what we do when we want to see more improvement in math or in literacy. I mean, that's, that's what we use assessment for and how we know when students are ready to move on. And other community members, they, maybe they don't understand that aspect and it's more like a, well, where are they compared to all the other schools or where they were 10 years ago? It's true, you know, two years we haven't had typical, you know, or what's, what's been typical. So to try to compare the 2017, the 2018s to the 21s, the 22s, right now, our main focus is take data and move kids forward based on that information. So that's, I mean, that's what's in our heart and that's what we do on a regular basis. But I hear what you, I also hear, I hear what you're saying as far as state testing. We prepare our kids to be independent thinkers and to be able to do this type of work on their own, but they're used to working in collaborative groups, they're used to working with adults in the building too. So it's very rare that we put them in front of a computer test for an hour and a half at a time. It, it doesn't typically happen. So, you know, we do some preparation, we want them to be able to demonstrate, have stamina to demonstrate what it is that they've learned. And with these, with these tests, it's applying the skills that they're learning here at school, which is the number one goal. Skills without being able to apply it is, is no good. We want them to be able to solve problems with those skills. So definitely want to provide our in-house testing and again, when test scores come out in June, to be able to kind of talk about any differences we've had through the years with our state tests.
So those screenings that you were reporting in February, that was like the green and yellow and?
Exactly right. It's iReady, which is a screener, and we also do star reading tests. Kindergarten didn't do star at the beginning of the year, but they will be doing it for the first time, but grades one through five are, are repeating that screening. So we can see some growth and provide some numbers about the growth that we're seeing.
So how many years of that data do we have to look at?
We just started iReady.
Well, but do we at least have since the fall, right? So we could see like the fourth grade started here and it's here now?
Yeah, individually, we look individually, I've never really taken star data to see grade level wide from year to year. It's more individually what, how students are improving. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm.
The, the state test scores that come out are really kind of grade level wide that come out. And of course, parents receive a report from us, which comes from the state after taking that New Hampshire SAS test.
So would we be able to have data even if it's just comparing to last January where the third grade class as a whole, which is now the fourth grade class is now? Or is that not?
Well, you're comparing two different groups of students there.
And I think he's saying that is, that they don't use that data that way, right? I think that's what he said.
But we could if we wanted to. Like we could. I know, and so, and this is the problem is that we are looking at this from like a funding, like where do we need to put more resources? And you are looking at it in terms of how do I help this kid? And so if that's, right, like how do we help this grade or how do we help, like, like you were saying, like is there a gap? Is there a problem in this one spot that we need to work on?
Yeah, I guess like to me, like I'm not saying that I want to identify where there's a problem. That's not my goal. Just I trust you to tell me where there's a problem and you need something. It's just that like I feel as though sometimes as board members, we're like in the dark. Like we, like I get questions in the public or I get, and I just like, and I keep going back to the current eighth grade class year, but like it was difficult to make that decision that year. And like I felt like, I mean, that, that there should have been, we should have been able to look at data and understand that. I just, I'm not looking for it for any, I'm not looking for any sort of massive data dump. I'm not looking for, I totally agree, it should be supported with subjective feedback about how things are doing. I just, I think that as a board, when we're funding programs, that we should look at results over time periodically, not all the time, once a year.
I totally get that. I want to be able to provide a presentation in February that kind of will show you some growth, not only from this year, but other years. I'd like to do that. Academics is definitely an important aspect of what we're here for, but obviously we take care of the whole child here at Swayze, so there's so much more than just literacy and math that take place at our school and the well-rounded experiences that students have here and their social, emotional needs is, you know, something we're always concerned about, that we try to brainstorm best practices for working with our kids to make sure that, you know, not only, they got to, if they get quality instruction, is, are they going to be able to retain it based on what their social, emotional needs are too?
And like Ron, that's a perfect example, right? Because it was just last year, two years ago, before the pandemic, that we were asked to add funding for.
I forget DAS or something.
What? No, for, oh my goodness, my brain's not working. Staff funding for the fifth day and so for the social and emotional, right? Like to be, there was a lot of requests for support and like that's an imperfect example. Like maybe that's not in the data, but like, like so we added a fifth day, you know, how, how is that working, right? Like how, like is there?
What do you mean fifth day?
My brain is, Mrs. McNally, sorry. That's what we added last year, a fifth day, right? Right? Like that's a perfect example, like, like is that working? Like we get asked for the money, but then like I'd love to know, is that helping?
Yeah, it's hard to quantify emotion, right? It's why we read, we don't write goals about whether students are happy. It's, it's hard to, you know, base what, what the input is for something like that. I mean, that's a challenge, in my opinion. That's a challenge, in my opinion. I know everybody is extremely busy and hardworking and doing their best to do, do the work. So let's at least look at some of the academic sides in February.
Brought this up the most, I know you'll be here, it's continuity throughout the year. Do you have anything specific or would it be wise for you to meet with Ron or Chris? Or I just want to make sure we walk. I just want a plan, I feel like it's ambiguous, we don't have a plan. And I, and I feel like we continue to kick the can down the road on these agendas, right? And we don't ever come to any resolution and that's on us too. I'm not blaming you, we're not saying to you, this is what we need to see, right? It's not, it's not fair all around, it's just, I find it confusing. I don't know if the rest of the board does or.
So if I can make a recommendation, Melissa, I think for our next meeting, we can talk about state testing in the cohorts that Allison is talking about. How we use that data that comes in, because that's one shot a year, as Ron has, has spoken about. But how we also use our diagnostic testing, because teachers use that every single day. So I think that's part of what is part of the questioning, how do we use the data? Because if we do have concerns, we would come to you saying, our reading's in the 10th percentile across the state. We need to do something either about it with a program or teacher training or to put resources somewhere. That's what we typically do when we come with you. But what I'm hearing is giving you more of that rationale of how we use the data. So for February, we'll give you some of the cohort trends, so you can look at how it's gone. One thing I would tell you to keep in mind is that the state test has, has shifted, so you, I can go back five years, but you're going to see two different tests. Even though it's supposed to be same competencies, it's, it's different. It's a different test that's given. Our diagnostic test and how our teachers use it is similar day in and day out. So I think that's what, where we could give you some of the rationale of how we look at data, what we do with that data and some of the suggestions that we do on a day-to-day basis, as well as those state testing. Because you're talking about some of these ranking sites, there's a lot of different indicators that go into those sites. Some is.
Some of it's diversity and it's based on zip code, it's ridiculous.
Your, your average income in your, in your town.
I get it.
And some is behavior incidents. They don't tell you that when they do it, but I have done all the research on some of the sites that are most frequent out there.
But that's what we want to hear from you, so that.
So I, I can definitely give you the background on some of these ranking sites and how it's done. Because some of it, it's just based on the number of AP tests your kids take at high school. More AP tests they get, the higher they go up in that ranking. And then the, the better they do, they go even higher. So it's not really fair to, to use those rankings unless you know what's going into, to determine those rankings.
Why does that keep going off? It helps to steer people clear of that. I think this is so helpful and I wish we would do it at the middle and high school level, because maybe the people that are relying on these rankings, if some. To you, if I'm hearing you correctly, this major test happens once a year. So that's why we're not going to have this monthly data that we, you know, we're not going to see it all the time. Because it's a, as you put it, it's a snapshot. I just want to make sure we get that out there.
Yeah, I think the last time I did a review of year-to-year New Hampshire state testing was like in 2018. I came to the board and I shared four to five years of changes in grades three, four and five through the years, percentaging pieces. And we've gone up and down, but historically, Swayze, Brentwood School District has been 20% and above over the state average in our state testing for math and EOL. So, I mean, that doesn't mean we're going to rest on our laurels and we don't look for ways of improvement. But I, I can definitely do that comparison from, and again, it's a tough one from last year, because you're going to compare last year's state testing, which was done a variety of ways with a variety of backgrounds, with being together, whether it's remote or in person. But I want to give you what you're looking for, because you know, like you said, Chris, just kind of answer the question. That's information you want to hear that, you know, I don't, that's not my world. My world is the day-to-day, my world is what is that student demonstrating today and what do I do with it? So I want to be able to provide that world for you, but also the, the community's only purview, which is those sites that we're talking about, which I don't know much about.
So when, in providing the data, we'll, we'll be able to compare, for example, last year's third grade and now how they're doing in fourth grade, plus the third grade to the third grade, right? Is it possible to see both? I get it's not totally accurate, just something. And then may I also ask you, how, how do you measure? I heard you say it's difficult, but let's say social, the social and emotional aspect for the children. Because there was a request, let's say, for example, let's have a guidance counselor for a fifth day. There have been requests for other supports. So I'm just curious, how do you know, like a responsive classroom or something? How do you know how well that is working?
How well we're supporting students with their social, emotional learning?
Well, yeah, how do you know if it's making a difference or not?
I think as we get together as leadership teams who hear from different grade levels and different teams, we find out what the needs are, we brainstorm things and trends that we're seeing with our students. Their ability to socialize, taking turns while playing games, taking turns while working together. And we see these trends, we definitely have the need for a full-time guidance counselor due to these variety of challenges. You know, a lot of our students came after, you know, being, you know, through the years, they've gone to daycare, they've gone to preschools, where we're finding students starting our kindergarten that didn't have any of those experiences because parents kept them home. So there's, there's some situations that we're kind of still trying to figure out, not just in our kindergarten and first grade, but throughout. So some of our students were rather isolated for a year and a half. And even the ones that were in-person, were used to working with, you know, the same eight students on a daily basis and not interacting with other kiddos. So I, I think what we do is we, we brainstorm good ideas. I know Pippi McNally's been, done a great job, not only working with individual students and talking with them and working with them, but also pushing into classrooms and teaching fantastic lessons, situational lessons that students can collaborate on. So as far as measuring, it's hard to measure. It's hard to measure the effectiveness of the programming.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything further?
I I guess, can we just repeat what's, because I feel like, do we now have a definitive thing that we're seeing next month? Or is it still not definitive?
I, I think we're gonna. I'm comfortable, I'll touch base with you. Or do you want like?
Well, I guess, I guess after this, these screenings happen this month and next month, I would like, and maybe this isn't until March. I'd like to see where the kids were in the fall versus where they are now, as, as a whole, like not.
That's, that's the plan for sure.
Okay, great, yeah.
All right, so the presentation will actually be in April, I guess, right? Because the March meeting is now a, oh no, we have a meeting in a couple of weeks.
We still have February.
Yeah, I'm hoping to do something in February if we have all the assessments complete.
Will you be ready for us? It's in two weeks. Okay. Letty, are you, are you outside?
Yeah, no, I just, I still was not entirely clear, because I just wanted to make sure.
No, I asked the same question, so I'm, I understand, okay. Thank you for that. Next, Chris, did you have anything else from the SAU office?
Nope, that's, that's it, thank you.
Okay. And then, next we have, Ron is going to discuss safety protocols. If I could just bring up to the, I know Ron knows, but just for the newer board members, if we could keep it really high level, no specific questions, especially because we're being live streamed. And if you have really detailed questions, maybe you can reach out to any one of us or Chris or Ron at any point in time with those questions, okay? Thank you.
Great, I have a couple of things to go over, definitely a couple of things that were on the agenda. I'd like to thank the board for listening to all the commentary from our, our Brentwood teachers that showed up tonight. I really appreciate you considering their thoughts. They are a fantastic crew, it's an honor to work with everybody. So, and I know the, the task at hand is challenging, but I appreciate everybody listening to their words. Safety and security. So all, all of our, all of our staff, as they start, they are trained in the Alice protocols. And what Alice does is provide a variety of support suggestions for intruders into the building. Now again, it's not something I'll go into detail about, but they've had at least an online training. It's been a couple of years since we've done some in-person training, where we've had people model some of the aspects of this program. So it is something I'd like to be able to put together with Rich Kane, Rich Kane comes in and does some of these trainings. We have consistently over the last two or three years done tabletop drills with a variety of staff members, leadership team, the office staff. And he runs through a situation that could possibly occur at a given time and then asks questions about what our response would be. So it's like a response team for a, a particular event. That's something else that we're going to continue to do each year, working with Rich Kane to go through this tabletop exercise.
Excuse me, Ron, do they do refreshers with the Alice training?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
You mean in-person?
No, just, I know a couple of years back, we all had access to it on the computer.
Yep.
That module, I wasn't sure if it's once every other year or something where it's revisited.
Every year the staff does it, they do it at the beginning of the year, yeah.
Okay, so can I, before we go further, just for the newer board members, is it possible if they're interested for them to see that module? Because we all did it as board members years ago and it actually was presented at convocation one year, where we were able to watch it and then part two of the module came along. Also along those same lines, the tabletops that were done at different schools, they do invite school board members to attend if you want to. And in the background, but if you want to go and witness and see, I personally think it's excellent, because I know even though we can't share details, I know that I could say to parents with confidence over the years, I've watched the process and wow, it's, it's very impressive, the work that you all do, so.
Yeah, we'll definitely, when we do a tabletop, we'll definitely invite and also for any kind of hands-on training for Alice. Each year, it's been, it's been a year and a half since we've done developmentally appropriate Alice drill with our students. So what it is, is more of a narrative, where we talk about a situation that could be occurring and then the staff have a variety of methods in which to react and act, okay? So the difference with Alice's compared to traditional lockdown is a variety of choices, so that teachers can make in-the-moment decisions based on what is happening. So that's a, that's the real difference and I won't go into a lot of detail about that. But it's something we'd like to continue to focus in practice. We have great protocols throughout the school. Our staff is really reliable about noticing things that are out of place, a car parked too close to the field or some person who's coming out of the woods. We've had people snowmobiling in the middle of recess, those types of things that are, you know, unfortunate, probably there's no malice intent, but you know, really making sure that we communicate and have a reaction to those things. Our front door protocols are in place. Our, our office staff do a wonderful job of, you know, there's, no one comes in the door without being greeted and being identified prior to them coming in to understand why they're there. So we've invested funds in our security cameras, which have come in handy both inside the building and outside the building. It's nice to know that they're there and they're used on a regular basis for a variety of reasons. So I appreciate the, how strong that team works to make sure that, and it's true for the entire staff, because we have doors throughout the building and everyone knows not to let people in any kind of entrance unless we can identify them as a staff member. So those are, those are some of the protocols that we've been following for safety and security. I'm hoping that's everything everybody wanted to hear. The next thing on the agenda is, I guess, to honor the, a retiree we have. And that's one of our paraprofessionals, I don't know how many years she's worked here, but I would, I would gather it's over 20 years and that's Kathy Blaisdell. I know she was here before, she's, she's right there. Hi Mary Catherine. Yeah, give her a round of applause. This is, this is Kathy last year at Swayze and besides working with students, which is her number one function, which she does eloquently, she is a spirited leader for the paraprofessionals, a true friend to staff who are in need of celebration or support. She lets me know every aspect of what goes on with our Sunshine team and those people that would need a little extra love and support and lets me know how the, the school is supporting these individuals. And as far as pulling the community together, I can think of no one more than Kathy Blaisdell. So I don't know how we're going to move on without her, but I just, I love working with her. So that's our one retiree for next year and it's a doozy. Thank you.
She's a super soccer grandma too. Have the luxury of coaching her grandson, so.
I have no doubt.
And she was a cohort lead last year too, right?
Absolutely, yeah, no. So thank you.
Thank you. Do, do we need to make a motion to accept, no, only if it was a resignation, right, not a retirement?
Correct.
So we don't have a choice?
Yeah, that would be a whole different conversation. I have a few other things I just wanted to bring up for the board, I'll, I'll be brief. Our report cards are going to be emailed home to all families on Friday, January 28th. I'll be sending out, Katie and I are going to be sending out information to parents about what they're going to see as far as the proficiency scales on the report card. It includes talking a little bit through the different aspects of what we have developing. We have proficient, we have extended learning as, as part of that scale. It's not the traditional one, two, three, four or A, B, C, D. So we want parents to understand that, you know, the report card is one aspect of understanding where their child is, quote unquote. And that developing could mean, listen, you're right on par, you're developing, this is where you're supposed to be. Or developing also could mean, listen, it's an area that we're going to spend some time, we need to devote some time to this. And I think through communicating with parents, through email, on the telephone, through the narrative or commentary section of the report card, that we're going to be able to provide that information. So prior to those going out, Katie and I will send out a presentation for parents to be able to look through and invite them not only to contact the classroom teacher directly about questions they might have, but to Katie and I, if we can help in any way to kind of understand competency a little bit better. way to kind of understand competency a little bit better. It's, it's, uh, it's a journey, it really is, to understand the difference between averaging all these, averaging grades and putting a, a mark, and trying to, uh, report out on students' development, which is what is most important to us. It's individual, uh, so that students aren't really stuck to just, uh, being graded as a kindergarten or a first grader, a second grader, that we can. The reporting is at a high depth of knowledge, so we want to be able to explain that to our parents. And again, one measure of what's going on. Seesaws and other, the conferences, phone calls, emails, newsletters, provide some great information. Are there any questions about reporting?
Not about report cards, I do have a question.
Okay, you want to ask it now, or?
Sure. So I got to ask about outdoor recess.
Yep.
So, can you kind of walk me through the decision-making process?
Yeah, absolutely. There, there comes a point where we have to make a decision, it's got to be based on a number, and it has to be on a feels-like. Um, there's sometimes there I can kind of bend it a little bit, the number has been set at a feels-like 20 degrees, okay, that's always traditionally been the way we've done it, at least since I've been here, okay? I'm sure there's other districts in late North Dakota, Wisconsin, where that number is a much lower, but for us, it's been a feels-like 20 degrees. Just, you know, if it's, if I see the trends moving up, and it feels like 18 degrees, we're going to get them outside, but when we're at a feels-like 11, or a feels-like 12, we decide to have indoor recess. That's where the decision-making comes in. We have to come to a number, and, and believe me, either way, we want, we want the students to be outside, but it is based on making sure that we're going to be outside and be comfortable. And I'm sure the next question is, well couldn't we get them out just for a little bit?
Well, so I've, so I've collected a little bit of data, um, and I don't know, like Ron, if that feels-like 20 is like just a practice that has, like since before you got here, or like if it's written somewhere. I understand that Exeter is a feels-like 15, um, I know for sure Kensington is a feels-like 18, um, but there have been, so, so last Wednesday, um, we were inside, um, we were the only school in the district inside last Wednesday, um, and so that's why I dig a little bit, to try to understand it. I guess my request is for us to, like, masks are like, right, like masks are this big debate, and everybody hates them, they want them to go away, but like the reality is, when the kids don't get outside, they are in masks all day long. Um, and so, I feel as though this year, like, requires, like, a little bit more consideration for the fact that they're in masks all day, and the fresh air really is, adds an extra value to them. I guess, like, my request is just, like, if we could air on the side of going out versus not, I don't know, I mean, like, I, I got a few emails from people last week, uh, asking what our protocol was, and so that's why I started to, to look around a little bit, um, and, like, I see my own kids when they come home and they haven't been outside, and it's, it's, they're different when they haven't been outside all day. And so, like, one of the things, like, I don't know if we have here, but we have, like, spare clothes, so, so, one day, when I was coming in to, to work lunch, and it had just been called, um, I asked, and they said this, because some kids don't have stuff with them, like, do we have backup stuff? Like, spare coats?
We have, we have some things.
Some things?
Yep.
Because I checked, and so, like, East Kingston has, like, a pair, one pair of boots in every size, like, in a closet, um, and one coat in every size, like, if there's, like, a need to do some sort of drive, so that we have, like, a rack outside the nurse's office, where the kids that need, like, I don't want that to be the reason that everybody else doesn't go out, right? Like, because somebody forgot their stuff.
It's, and I have to tell you, like, if, I wasn't at school last week, I wasn't able to talk to you about that, the people that you did talk to really don't set that parameter, it's me that sets it, so I wish, you know, you, you and I would have talked and not, had you talked to somebody else who didn't make the decision, because it's really my decision, even though I wasn't in the building, but they know what I'm, they know what I would say if I was in the building, so.
Yeah.
That's something that you and I can talk about, like, I don't want that to be the onus of someone who's not the administrator of the building, but it's definitely something I consider, like I said, when we're, we're close to it, I see that trend moving up, we're 16, we're moving to 17, but I, I want, I, I do hear what you're saying about getting kids outside, it is challenging for the little ones to get all dressed up, go outside for 10 minutes, and then come back in, too, um, but it's definitely something I'll consider.
Yeah.
Another thing I'd like to do is talk to the other administrators in the SAU, to see what their parameters are, and the decision-making that they do, which I do on a regular basis, I talk to other administrators at our elementary schools, we're very tight, I want to talk to them a little bit about their practices, too, and, uh, whether it's working out for their kiddos, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. All right, I have, I have a list of things, I'm going to be super-duper quick now. So, uh, I recently sent out in my smores newsletter about snow days, so if we have a second snow day, it's going to be a traditional snow day, but if we have third and more, it'll be remote learning, and, and moving forward, that's what it would be. During remote learning, students will have live sessions with their classroom teachers, and they'll have some work to do, teachers will be available all during the day, specialists will also be available a couple of times during the day, and send homework for those snow learning days, but we still have one more that would be traditional.
So where, I know you had told me this, who decided this, David Ryan, or?
Dr. Ryan worked with the principals at a administrative meeting to get input from each of their schools, and that was the decision that was made, um, hearing from last year, kids not getting a traditional snow day, so it was also discussed through multiple school districts across the state of what they were doing, so there was, um, conversations with other area superintendents, so that was the, um, decision that was made, that two traditional snow days, unless it's like a rain or, or a windy electrical day, then we'd call remote. If it's a snow day where kids can get out and play in the snow, as we did, you know, for our first snow day, then a snow day would be called, anything after that, then we start getting into the, um, temperatures in June, so we don't want to extend our school day, school year, uh, into that third and fourth week of June, so, um, that was how the decision was arrived.
And the, the reason why I ask, is I remember, this is years and years ago, there were five days built in, you know, to the calendar, and then if you didn't use them, you get out early, then it slowly went down to three, and then a few years, handful of years back, I noticed that there were no snow days built in, and we just added them on, so I was just curious how all of that's evolved. Okay, thanks.
Chris, is it true that I didn't, this wasn't in Ron's, but like, at CMS, I think that they told them that they wouldn't be two consecutive days, is that, I know that's irrelevant this year, because we've already had our first one, but was that part of the conversation, or?
It's, so we said the first two, if it's traditional snow, across all of our districts. Now, the only one that could be an exception for our next snow day would be Newfields, because we had to have two snow days, because they didn't have a boiler, so there was no heat in the building.
So like, if you had a storm, you could potentially blow those two days right back-to-back?
You could, yep.
Okay.
Yep, so again, you know, Dr. Ryan will try to give as much advanced warning as possible, and for those, that would be a remote day, because obviously we want to get technology home with kids, so that they can jump on and have access to, um, their teachers in the, the, um, classes for the day.
Can I ask a question about that? If we wanted to go back to the more traditional, where you build in snow days, wh- when would that conversation happen? Would that be a joint board meeting, would that be at one of these meetings, or what, where would that be?
So you build the calendar, um, so the board is, approves a calendar for the year, so that'd be something that you would, um, approve by this board, um, obviously, I think you'd want other input at a joint board meeting, but you approved the calendar for, for Swayze.
All right.
Um, a couple as a change, uh, we, and I know we're going with the budget, the proposed budget, that the board approved with our paving, uh, in there, so, like, I'm not going to speak to any Warren articles. I've asked, uh, Maureen from, uh, our kitchen to come and join us, she's going to come for a little bit, and hopefully we'll be able to get to, uh, our, our budget right away. If not, uh, she has prepared, uh, uh, some numbers for us as far as average, uh, food, uh, expenditures from this year, and revenues that are coming in, um, so we can talk a little bit about the, the food program tomorrow as well.
Ron, before, while we're still on that, um, I just want to make sure, Chris, did you get my message this morning about the further information?
Yes.
The preschool and the?
Yep.
Okay.
You're all set.
And the, there's just one other thing that I wanted to bring up, um, tomorrow night, we're going to go over, um, the budget, and then we're going to go over the three Warren articles that we discussed as a board. The public hearing, though, sorry, I'm fogging up.
It's the ninth.
Okay. So, February 9th, um, is, they'll have a budget committee meeting initially, public hearing, it's budget committee, I believe, at 6:00, public hearing at 7:00, um, and then again, it will be followed by another budget committee meeting, because you can't vote or sign anything until after you've heard from the public. Um, that being said, I have brought it to their attention that we hopefully will have a Warren article, um, regarding the BTA to be presented on the 9th, so I just don't want the BTA to be concerned that we don't have a Warren article to present to them tomorrow night. I've been in touch with them several times to say, you know, we hope to have it by this night.
So, I, I am, I'm going to talk a little bit about the, the preschool program, that it's a 60-40 split right now with the Kensington School District, I don't know if they are interested in knowing, like, individual salary for a teacher, and paraprofessional, and that type of?
I think you can just let them know that it's supported either out of a grant or budget, where that money comes from.
For sure.
And then the enrollment.
Okay.
Yep.
Yep.
But if it's easily accessible, at least have it at your fingertips, only because I don't want it to hold up a vote on our budget.
I'll ask, I'll ask Chris and Molly tomorrow if they could send me, uh,
Okay.
some specifics for health and that type of thing, for our, for our pre-K teacher.
Okay.
Yep. I did update, um, the, um, today's enrollment, which also affects the projected enrollment for next year, because I base it on a little formula, of course, it's, you know, it's a who-knows kind of thing, but in the 10 years that I've been here, we've had more students register between August and December than I've ever seen. You know, we've had, we've had some kids leave, too, but quite a lot of students have been, uh, coming into Swayze that I've, I've never traditionally seen, so.
Thank you.
Is that true across the district, Chris? Because that, what was the number, you met, you, like, 20-something?
There's, yeah, there's been like over 24 additional students that we weren't kind of expecting.
Right.
Yeah, we have seen that in other schools as well.
You have seen it.
Yeah, and in other.
I mean, there's a lot of building in Brentwood, too, but I was curious whether it was like a, so it's probably a combination of both.
I think I'm just going to start letting them register for first grade and fourth grade. That's it.
Is that where they're all coming in?
That's your choice. You can be in first grade, or you can be in fourth grade.
Sounds good.
That's a joke.
Um, Ron, I have two questions. The first, I don't know if this is like for here, or if it's a parent email to you, or if it's the, the, um, PFG, but thinking about those cold recess days, like, our paras are outside at recess, and they're outside at pickup, too, is there a way, like, can, do they need hand warmers, or is there like any way that this school can support them who are outside in the feels-like, like, I would send my kids out when it feels like negative 20, probably, but the parent, like, if the paras, it's the same group of people that are outside for drop-off, recess, and pickup, is there any way we can support them in the cold?
No, it's a great idea, never provided, like, hand warmers, um, it, it seems that our paraprofessionals, after being here a year, they, uh, and our teachers get, like, the long coats, they go all the way down to their ankles, it's a, quite the fashion statement, right, Mrs. Blaisdell? Oh, that's a short one. Wow. It could be a good idea, right? No, because it, you know, for our paraprofessionals, it's five days a week of recess, which is a half an hour, and it's one thing for a child to be running around and, you know, building out, but our paraprofessionals aren't running around. They're doing a good job of watching what's going on out there, and then, um, once, twice, maybe three times a week, they also have morning or, uh, after-school duty, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Second question I, that I had is, like, are we okay, I'm thinking, like, I kind of know that, but are we okay on subs?
Sure.
And stuff, like, obviously, we need subs, is that, is there anything that we can do to, like, attract them?
How much do we pay our subs? Out of curiosity?
Not, not enough.
Like, is there any way that we?
Okay.
Is it, what is it, 115 a day or something?
Yeah, it's 115 a day.
We got raised last year, didn't it?
Yeah.
It did.
Went from like 85 to 115.
We've had some former Swayze staff members that have signed on to help us out, uh, as much as possible, which has been extremely helpful, um, there's been a couple of new faces coming in, I talked to one of our parents who is applying to be a substitute as well, so, um, I don't know, I think we're in the same boat as a lot of, uh, schools.
Yeah, so to answer your question, pre-pandemic, we typically had 90 subs in the queue for our 11 schools, uh, we are now currently at 52 subs for all of our, our schools, and obviously, there's more people out, and for extended period of time, so, um, the other part with that is that we typically had subs that would go to any school or any district based on need, it seems much more, uh, right now, that they're, they're school or site-specific where they want to go. So, yes, anybody that would like to sub, please sign up, and the, uh, how we could attract more subs is definitely something that we'd be looking at through the HR department, um, to attract more, more subs.
The price, the, is per, is for the whole district, so we're not competing with each other, though, right?
That is correct.
Yes.
That is correct.
And is there, like, can we use COVID on, like, is there, I don't know, I just am like, it seems like it's an issue, I just don't know if there's anything.
So would that be a joint board decision to raise that number?
Uh, it would be something that each individual school board would have to budget for, or have a discussion about. So, there could definitely be recommendations that you, as a joint board, could make to Dr. Ryan, and each board could have individual discussions, because there is a salary line for subs in there.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, not having enough subs feels like a huge problem, so it feels like if we need to pay them more to get more of them, then?
So I can tell you, we have had introductory talks, uh, with human resources about ways that we could entice people to come sub, um, and so, we, we are looking at this issue, because it, it is an issue that we'd like to discuss.
You just gave me a good idea for my smores for Friday, though.
Recruiting. And is that, like, a sub would have to be like a qualify, like, what qualifications do they need? Can they be like a parent?
They can, um, they just have to pass a background check, uh, so it's, it's obviously 18 or above, um, is what we'd be looking for. Um, and again, we had, um, just brought to us today, we had, our onboarding process could be a little bit longer, because we had some, um, college students who came home who wanted to sub during their break, and it just took us too long to onboard them, so where we could have gotten them back, you know, at the beginning of January, and they could have got two to three weeks with us, um, so, again, these are the things that we're seeing that we need to prepare for rather than react to.
Have you, have you thought at all, or have you talked to HR at all about reaching out to, like, the education department at UNH, to see if any of those students?
We have, and that's something that we've discussed, um, so again, um, I'm not sure that college students right now, unless they're in education, would, would want to come sub for $115.
And lunch from Ms. Maureen? But if there's, I just, like, if there's anything we can do to help that effort, that would be good to know.
To us, so if someone, yeah, please keep spreading the word, um, and if they need to, just con, have them contact the HR department, we'll walk them through the application online.
Okay.
So that'd be great.
Perfect.
That concludes my report.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. One, you said that you changed the number you're estimated for kindergarten next year. Do you know what that new number is?
I think kindergarten was the only one I didn't change.
Okay, you changed all the other ones?
Yeah, what I did was put today's enrollment and it's two additional students per grade level.
Okay.
That's the secret formula.
Okay.
Okay, um, do we have any board member queries?
Yes, but haven't already been covered.
I've talked about all mine already. So you all, nobody has any board member queries? Okay, um, next up is emails to specific board members.
Did we put that on there? When one board member gets an email from someone out in the community, how it gets represented with the whole board, whether it's at this meeting or if it goes directly to the chair, since that's one of the roles and responsibilities to be able to be the spokesperson unless there's someone else that's selected by the board to respond to emails from the community. So it was something we wanted to kind of talk about that process a little further.
So if, if we get an email that is just to us...
Correct.
Related to the school.
What kind of email?
No, I'm clarifying what the bullet is.
Oh, all right. I was asking just in case it was related to negotiations, that's all.
No, I mean, I've, like, traditionally, like, if I get an email or a lot of times, and we've had this conversation, I get like a personal text from somebody who has my information, like asking, like, I got one about the report cards last fall and I responded and said, I'm happy to talk to you, but you also need to talk to Ron. And I think they met with Ron or Katie. So we're not supposed to respond to those?
So remember, board members can't, one board member can't act on behalf of the board. And I think that was a concern when only one board member is getting the email. How does it get, how do they get communication back where under the rules...
But like, it's a board member query and we've been always told that we should refer them to you or Ron or Melissa or...
And that, that can be done. And I think that's what we talked about, Letty said that she's got an automatic reply. Thank you for responding. However, all communication goes to the board chair or something similar to that. So I think it's just talking it out that everyone's following the same process moving forward.
So just, you said that we shouldn't respond about negotiation stuff to any of them, like, so...
So I just want to, just, and maybe, Chris, you can jump in or Brian if you need to because you were on the same call. So we received emails from the five members, or members of the negotiation team, right? As a board?
If you say so. I, I personally would not know the difference between any, like, it's just all emails I'm getting. Unless they specifically say they're on negotiation team, I wouldn't know that.
Okay, people from the BTA have emailed regarding negotiations. I have not responded back because I had felt that as part of the ground rules, legally, it should be done as part of the negotiations team and not me doing a sidebar conversation. Today, we did speak with our legal counsel about that because I did, Chris knows, I struggled with it for a few days to not respond directly. But legally, I wanted to make sure that I was following things exactly as I should. Legal counsel did confirm that, yes, it was best for me not to respond directly. So it was nothing personal or not meant to be hurtful in any way. But we are in the midst of negotiations and I just feel like there are so many legal aspects to it that I don't want us to step into anything that we're unaware of or have unintended consequences. So I would say in those cases, just forward them on to myself and you can add Chris or Brian, we're the negotiations team, or forward the entire board.
Uh, no, so you got, I mean, these were all emails that went to the whole board and I do not know, like, I haven't been in those negotiations. I don't know which people are on the team, which people are not. I got an email from a parent, like, I just, I'm not sure how I would know which ones to not respond to, is all I'm saying. And when I say respond, I literally just say like, thank you for emailing us. Board policy is that the chair responds on our behalf.
That's fine. And the same thing, if anyone were to private message any board member through social media, best not to respond because that's outside of what's happening with negotiations. And I think we just need to follow the rules, for lack of a better way to put it, and be consistent. Do you have anything to add, Brian or Chris? No?
Are we overly limiting this to negotiations? Or should these rules apply to all communications? Because I would think that these would apply to all communications because if it's about the going outside at temperature thing, then we would, we wouldn't have that individual conversation. We would refer to you or to Ron or to Chris or what have you. So I, I think the only gloss I would add is it's not just about negotiations. So it doesn't matter whether the person's on the BTA. Negotiating team is just funnel it through the appropriate people.
Did we, I mean, we had this conversation two months ago. Did we set up the auto response? Do we know?
Not, no.
I, I personally have something that I say to people, just it's like, I have seen your message, thank you. Our board policy is that the chair responds on behalf of all of us. Like, when we get all these emails that are to all of us... Right. I reply not all, I just reply to the one person. Because replying all would make it a meeting, I think, or something? Yes? So I just reply and say like, I have seen, basically, I've seen this.
So that, that reply all, Allison's right in your settings and so that each individual would have to set that up?
So we should just go in and say, we received your email. Set a response saying we received your email.
So we did check because I can't do it through SAV.
I promise you, I've read them all.
Did we have anything else on that correspondence?
I don't have any.
I do have an email. And this came to me in the month of December from Lisa Swayze. And she was reaching out on behalf of the BTA. And she said, Melissa, I have a standing obligation on Monday evenings, which prevent me from attending the very beginning of the school board meetings when there's public comment. I would like you to read this during public comment, if you would. Last year, after the amazing job that the Swayze teachers in Paris did delivering a choice model of education for both in-person and remote students, you and I commended the staff for their above and beyond efforts made to make the year successful. You said that you wanted to do something for the staff as a thank you. I could not think of anything offhand, but I said I would hold the staff to see what they would want. The staff did not ask for additional compensation or time off. They asked that you remember the efforts and professionalism demonstrated when it was time to negotiate the contract and you said you would do that. This is a reminder that the Swayze teachers in Paris do an excellent job and are worth keeping. With respect and appreciation, Lisa Zax Swayze. Do we have anything else?
Do not.
Do you mind doing the COVID communication? I don't have any updates.
I was not on the call on Wednesday, unfortunately. I was in another meeting.
So I don't have any updates either, but at this point in time, the transmission level has been at 20%, so there are no changes anyway.
I think it hit 22 today, so.
And do you talk at those meetings about the staffing threshold around the district that would force us to be remote for day, days? Or is that a separate?
One, I think the, number one, I think the district is committed to being in person. Number one, but number two, it's not the scope of the committee. It just basically, when those numbers fall below that threshold, communication to the public. Would you agree?
Yeah, I mean, to answer Megan's question, Dr. Ryan has worked with all principals to kind of think about what your threshold would be of where you would not be able to provide safe supervision for kids based on staffing.
Okay.
And I will tell you that the staff is, you know, is covered in many different ways, so, but that conversation has had with, with all of our principals so that they would make Dr. Ryan aware.
New business, we have policy review. Did you want to lead this, Brian?
I can do so. I was unable to attend the December policy meeting, so I do not have, unfortunately, a lot of background. The first item is policy IGE, which we did discuss in November about rental objection specific, specific course material. This is based on statute RSA 186119C. The policy recommended by the policy committee is the first policy that appears. And the second one is the existing Swayze policy. Chris did get a comment from Ms. Mayo with some recommendations or questions about that policy, specifically she'd like to see a change where, or the BTA, rather, not Ms. Mayo. I would like to see a change where it says the building principal and the parent guardian must mutually agree to the alternative instruction, that the classroom teacher be added to that group of people approving. Then she also had a question why a particular paragraph was removed from the Swayze version from 2017 and not included in the 2021 version. Not having been at the December policy meeting, I can't say why that was removed. It does appear the paragraph, what that was removed has to do with instruction rather than materials, but I'm only guessing and I don't want to influence the discussion based on a guess. And just for the record, the BTA did not have any input on the other two policies under discussion tonight.
The second one is the current Swayze policy?
Yes.
So I'm speculating here, looking at the old policy, that I wonder if the reason it doesn't have the teacher is because that next paragraph that's removed talks about alternative instruction, which might not, I guess, necessarily be the classroom teacher?
So I think the question about adding the, we're talking about the third paragraph of the policy as recommended by the policy committee, adding the building principal and the parent guardian must mutually agree to the alternative instruction material, and whether or not we would want to add the building principal, classroom teacher and the parent guardian there. I don't know if that has to do with the, the remove paragraph because you still want, would you want the classroom teacher's input on the alternative material?
Yeah, it seems like they removed that whole paragraph and replaced it just with one line in that third paragraph. I mean, I think if classroom teachers are going to be expected to, like, carry out that instructional material, then they should be included. But if it's something where a classroom teacher doesn't, like, the student's going to be pulled from the classroom and I don't know what they would do and do something outside, then, but I think that if they're going to be expected to teach whatever that material is, then they should have to, they should be part of that.
I agree. And if, if it's an instance where they're not going to be a part of it, having them listed there wouldn't influence it either way, right?
I think it's still their student, so, yeah, absolutely, yeah. How do you feel about it, Brian?
So it sounds like we would support adding the classroom teacher to that paragraph. I do support that regardless of whether that teacher does perform the alternative instruction because that classroom teacher would know, with all respect to Ron, have a, probably a more detailed idea of whether that would, the alternative material would meet the minimum standards to that grade level or that unit or that competency, whatever the case may be. So I support that amendment.
Does this have to go back to the policy committee or we just amend it?
It does not. You can make the decision tonight to approve it.
So let's add classroom teacher there?
I would also like to add back and/or instruction. So the old one said, any class associated with the alternative materials and/or instruction shall be borne by the parent guardian. The new one says just alternative materials, it doesn't say and/or instruction. But I think in a situation where the alternative materials can be worked into the, the class that's already existing, that's fine. But in the situation where you have to pull that kid out, then you're going to have to have a staff member be with them. And I think that if the parent is choosing not to take it, take advantage of the materials and instruction we're providing for them, that they should have to bear those costs.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
What if it conflicts with them, whether it be religiously, ethically or morally, and therefore, they don't want their child subjected to that? Do you still think they should have to pay?
So this is not, my understanding, this is not about, I don't want my child to learn that, so I want them to be taken out. It's that I don't want my child to learn that and here's this other thing I want them to learn instead.
I, I don't think it's a matter of opinion in this case. I don't think we have a choice. So RSA 186119C, the policy shall, and shall means must, include a provision requiring the parent or legal guardian to notify the school principal and a provision requiring an alternative agreed upon by the school district and the parent at the parent's expense sufficient to enable the child to meet state requirements for education in the particular subject area. So I think that we are required in our statute to have this be at parent's expense. It's a requirement of the policy under RSA 18611, or nine, 186119C.
But then while you're, while you're in the RSA anyway, does it mention anything about how we're required to notify the parents? You know, for example, at the bottom where it mentions the two weeks advance notice, do you email or other, just curious, what does that say?
It just, it says it's required, the policy shall address the method of delivering notification to a parent or legal guardian. So it doesn't specify the means. It just says that we are required to, in the policy, indicate the means. But it doesn't say the means aren't limited or set forth in the RSA. So we have some flexibility there and I think the policy as drafted provides the most flexibility possible to the, the school.
I personally would be more comfortable if we just took out the words website posting because my concern is that the parents actually have to go and seek out the information versus making sure the information is delivered to them.
If we remove that, that doesn't mean that we couldn't also still post on the website. It just wouldn't be...
The only way.
The only way. Is that, is that accurate? We could still do it that way in addition to sending an email. We could also post it on the website or if we take it out, right?
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
It's okay. So we can take out website posting from this policy, but we could, they could still post on the... But we could, they could still post on the website in addition to email, other written means, and a phone call. I mean, I'm okay with that, I guess?
Are you all fine with that?
I mean, I guess. I'm not like in love with it, but it's fine. And Brian, is it required? It is required to have the note regarding human sexuality or human sexual education?
That's specifically in there. And that's the only
So we need to have that.
Piece that's particularly addressed as far as subject matter in the statute. So that's pretty much grabbed right from the statute.
Do you not like that one? Just curious.
Not particularly, but.
I think that
You don't like that it's the only one called out or?
Yeah, I mean, I just don't like that it's the only one called out and that it, like the two-week requirement, I think, puts a burden on teachers.
I agree, but it is in the statute that "The policy shall also require the school district or classroom teacher to provide parents and legal guardians not less than two weeks' advance notice of curriculum course material used for instruction of human sexuality or human sexual education." So we're required to do that. Or the policy is required to include that language.
So we're going to add teachers and we're going to remove website? And what was there, what paragraph this letter you had another change to?
The, "Any class associated with the alternative materials and/or instruction shall be borne by the parent guardian," where it's, right now, it just says alternative materials. So adding back in and/or instruction, which sounds like matches the RSA based on what Brian was saying?
Does it say instruction? Does the RSA say instruction or just, just confirming because I forgot already? Instruction versus material?
"For the parent to notify the principal writing of material to which they object, provision requiring an alternative agreed upon by the school district and the parent at the parent's expense sufficient to enable the child to meet the requirements for education in the particular subject area." So it is not, I would say, 100% clear. It's the, whether it's materials or instruction. Or both.
Do you know why they took out that paragraph? Do you have any original one?
No.
Okay.
So do we need a motion?
Yes. Should we make, should we do it all and all the changes in one? Is that easier that way?
Yeah.
That's you, Letty.
Oh, boy. Okay. I make a motion that we, hold on, what were the two things we wanted to change?
How about we approve the policy as amended? You have all the amendments, right?
I do. You can do it that way.
There you go. Just make a motion to approve this policy as amended.
Okay. I, I make a motion to approve the policy with the two amendments that we discussed.
It was three.
It was three amendments, I believe.
Three amendments. It was adding teachers. It was alternative materials and instruction. And it was
Website.
Take out the website.
Yep, got it.
I redact my previous motion and I put forth the motion to accept. I make a motion that we accept suggested policy IGE with the three amendments that we discussed here tonight.
Do you have a second?
I will second the amended motion to adopt policy IGE as amended.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hi, Judy Annis. Next one.
All right. The next two policies are first reading, so we are not going to make final decisions on these tonight. Is that correct, Chris?
Yeah, and you can. The investment one is just something that's required that you review every year. You don't have to do anything with it. There's no changes. So you do not need to do a second reading on it because it's required that you just review it at a meeting so that you're doing that duty tonight. The second one on alternative diplomas, just to make you aware, has no impact since there is not alternative diplomas at Swayze. So again, it's more of an informational piece of a policy that is being brought forth at the high school for the co-op.
I have a question. Do we, so we don't do an eighth grade, or sorry, not eighth grade, fifth grade diploma or any other ceremony?
Not as outlined by this policy.
Okay.
It's not an official.
And there's a specific term at sixth grade. It's not called a graduation, correct? It's called a celebration, something specifically the school avoids using. Graduation from, I'm sorry, fifth grade. I left elementary school at sixth grade.
I did the same thing.
Sorry.
I know what you meant.
Yep.
So any student that would qualify here would already be wrapped into whatever the rest of their classmates are doing, so you don't need to.
So Brian, were you there for the policy committee meeting for the investments that were just housekeeping? Every year, we just review them again?
No. It's part of the policy itself that says we're required to, is required to be reviewed periodically by the board. Chris, just a second of that. I was, again, not at the meeting in December.
I think we reviewed this at my first meeting last, like in March.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I feel like we did too.
All right.
But yeah, because every year. All right. Are you comfortable, Brian, if we made a motion tonight? Or do you want us to wait a month? It's up to you.
No, I'm comfortable. I don't notice substantive changes in the investment policy. So it's continue as is.
Does anyone want to make a motion on?
You don't need to make a motion because you already have this policy in place.
Oh, all right.
So you don't need any changes. And then you don't have to do anything on the alternative diplomas because it does not apply to. It's more of a
So it would just say that we reviewed it now in January?
Be part of these minutes that they have been reviewed.
And if you're not able to make it to policy, feel free to recruit someone else.
Letty.
I will. All right.
Nothing else for policies? Public comment? Do we have any further public comment tonight?
Nope.
No way. Do we have a meeting to adjourn, I mean, a motion to adjourn? Doesn't matter what I forget.
We have to do the superintendent evaluation? We have to go into non-public? Sorry.
Oh. May I have a motion to go into non-public?
Sorry. I told? I don't know.
Hold on. I'll make, where is it?
I forgot.
I will make a motion to go into non-public under RSA 91A 32A, which is talking about an employee, maybe? Or C, reputation? I don't know. Which letter is it?
I would do C.
C.
C, okay.
Okay, so Allison made the motion, Letty made the second. All of them favor? Oh, no, aye. Roll call.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. We appreciate it.
I just got, who was the second on that one? Sorry.
Letty.
Who was first? Letty made the motion.
Allison made the motion, Letty.
Whoever needs whoever.
I didn't make the motion. I just said we had to make it.
I would make it too.
Oh, okay, that's fine. No, I don't care.
Doesn't matter.
So I think that we are required in our statute to have this be at parent's expense. It's a requirement of the policy under RSA 186 11, or nine, 186 11 9 C.
But then while you're, while you're in the RSA anyway, does it mention anything about how we're required to notify the parents? You know, for example, at the bottom where it mentions the two weeks' advance notice? Do you email or other, just curious, what is that say?
It just says it's required, "The policy shall address the method of delivering notification to a parent or legal guardian." So it doesn't specify the means. It just says that we are required to, in the policy, indicate the means. But it doesn't say the means aren't limited or set forth in the RSA. So we have some flexibility there. And I think the policy as drafted provides the most flexibility possible to the school.
I personally would be more comfortable if we just took out the words website posting because my concern is that the parents actually have to go and seek out the information versus making sure the information is delivered to them.
If we remove that, that doesn't mean that we couldn't also still post on the website. It just wouldn't be
The only way.
The only way. Is that, is that accurate? We could still do it that way in addition to sending an email. We could also post on the website or if we take it out, right?
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
It's okay. So we can take out website posting from this policy. But we could, they could still post on the website in addition to email, other written means, and a phone call. I mean, I'm okay with that, I guess?
Are you all fine with that?
I mean, I guess. I'm not like in love with it, but it's fine. And Brian, is it required? It is required to have the note regarding human sexuality or human sexual education?
That's specifically in there. And that's the only
So we need to have that.
Piece that's particularly addressed as far as subject matter in the statute. So that's pretty much grabbed right from the statute.
Do you not like that one? Just curious.
Not particularly, but.
I think that
You don't like that it's the only one called out or?
Yeah, I mean, I just don't like that it's the only one called out and that it, like the two-week requirement, I think, puts a burden on teachers.
I agree, but it is in the statute that "The policy shall also require the school district or classroom teacher to provide parents and legal guardians not less than two weeks' advance notice of curriculum course material used for instruction of human sexuality or human sexual education." So we're required to do that. Or the policy is required to include that language.
So we're going to add teachers and we're going to remove website? And what was there, what paragraph this letter you had another change to?
The, "Any class associated with the alternative materials and/or instruction shall be borne by the parent guardian," where it's, right now, it just says alternative materials. So adding back in and/or instruction, which sounds like matches the RSA based on what Brian was saying?
Does it say instruction? Does the RSA say instruction or just, just confirming because I forgot already? Instruction versus material?
"For the parent to notify the principal writing of material to which they object, provision requiring an alternative agreed upon by the school district and the parent at the parent's expense sufficient to enable the child to meet the requirements for education in the particular subject area." So it is not, I would say, 100% clear. It's the, whether it's materials or instruction. Or both. Yeah.
Do you know why they took out that paragraph? Do you have any original one?
No.
Okay.
So do we need a motion?
Yes. Should we make, should we do it all and all the changes in one? Is that easier that way?
Yeah.
That's you, Letty.
Oh, boy. Okay. I make a motion that we, hold on, what were the two things we wanted to change?
How about we approve the policy as amended? You have all the amendments, right?
I do. You can do it that way.
There you go. Just make a motion to approve this policy as amended.
Okay. I, I make a motion to approve the policy with the two amendments that we discussed.
It was three.
It was three amendments, I believe.
Three amendments. It was adding teachers. It was alternative materials and instruction. And it was
Website.
Take out the website.
Yep, got it.
I redact my previous motion and I put forth the motion to accept. I make a motion that we accept suggested policy IGE with the three amendments that we discussed here tonight.
Do you have a second?
I will second the amended motion to adopt policy IGE as amended.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hi, Judy Annis. Next one.
All right. The next two policies are first reading, so we are not going to make final decisions on these tonight. Is that correct, Chris?
Yeah, and you can. The investment one is just something that's required that you review every year. You don't have to do anything with it. There's no changes. So you do not need to do a second reading on it because it's required that you just review it at a meeting so that you're doing that duty tonight. The second one on alternative diplomas, just to make you aware, has no impact since there is not alternative diplomas at Swayze. So again, it's more of an informational piece of a policy that is being brought forth at the high school for the co-op.
I have a question. Do we, so we don't do an eighth grade, or sorry, not eighth grade, fifth grade diploma or any other ceremony?
Not as outlined by this policy.
Okay.
It's not an official.
And there's a specific term at sixth grade. It's not called a graduation, correct? It's called a celebration, something specifically the school avoids using. Graduation from, I'm sorry, fifth grade. I left elementary school at sixth grade.
I did the same thing.
So, sorry.
I know what you meant.
Yep.
So any student that would qualify here would already be wrapped into whatever the rest of their classmates are doing, so you don't need to.
So Brian, were you there for the policy committee meeting for the investments that were just housekeeping? Every year, we just review them again?
No. It's part of the policy itself that says we're required to, is required to be reviewed periodically by the board. Chris, just a second of that. I was, again, not at the meeting in December.
I think we reviewed this at my first meeting last, like in March.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I feel like we did too.
All right.
But yeah, because every year. All right. Are you comfortable, Brian, if we made a motion tonight? Or do you want us to wait a month? It's up to you.
No, I'm comfortable. I don't notice substantive changes in investment policy. So it's continue as is.
Does anyone want to make a motion on?
You don't need to make a motion because you already have this policy in place.
Oh, all right.
So you don't need any changes. And then you don't have to do anything on the alternative diplomas because it does not apply to. It's more of a
So it would just say that we reviewed it now in January?
Be part of these minutes that they have been reviewed.
And if you're not able to make it to policy, feel free to recruit someone else.
Letty.
I will. All right.
Nothing else for policies? Public comment? Do we have any further public comment tonight? Nope. No way. Do we have a meeting to adjourn, I mean, a motion to adjourn? Doesn't matter what I forget.
We have to do the superintendent evaluation? We have to go into non-public? Sorry.
Oh. May I have a motion to go into non-public?
Sorry. I told? I don't know.
Hold on. I'll make, where is it? I forgot. I will make a motion to go into non-public under RSA 91A 32A, which is talking about an employee, maybe? Or C, reputation? I don't know. Which letter is it?
I would do C.
C.
C, okay.
Okay, so Allison made the motion, Letty made the second? All of them favor? Oh, no, aye. Roll call.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. We appreciate it.
I just got, who was the second on that one? Sorry.
Letty.
Who was first? Letty made the motion.
Allison made the motion, Letty.
Whoever needs whoever.
I didn't make the motion. I just said we had to make it.
I would make it too.
Oh, okay, that's fine. No, I don't care.
Doesn't matter.